Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 18th City Council Meeting. My name is Joshua Lee, and I'm serving as Acting Mayor for tonight. Please join me if you're able for rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic in the royal hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wosnowski, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Walter.
Very much. Next, we will move into Citizens' Comment. This is a time for residents or business owners to address the council. Typically, for items that are not already on the agenda tonight, we will have time for that when we get to those agenda items. If you do have something to address the council with, please come up to the podium, state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Yes.
Hey, thank you very much. My name is Dane Schneeman. I'm a resident of Lakeville. I live on Javelin Ave in Lakeville. I don't know if this is the right audience for this topic or whatnot, but I'm here to connect some dots, just as a person who lives in Lakeville. My goal tonight is to connect some dots. I'm going to take, you know, the school vouchers issue. I'm going to take my property taxes from 2025 that are proposed next year, try to tie those together, and just raise an issue that I see that could be an issue for Lakeville tax revenue in the future. I received the 2025, you know, proposed taxes in the mail. For anybody that hasn't gotten that before or have seen that before, just take a look at that. My taxes on my home went up by a significant amount, so I'm looking at that and trying to make sense of it all, right? Tax price or the tax or the increase in home value for Lakeville for 2025 went up about 4.2%. My house, you know, I guess I'm lucky. It went up by 7%, so my specific tax revenue went up by about $556, right? As you know, that's broken down into little sections, so it's the Dakota County section of that tax levy, the Lakeville District 194. The Lakeville one specifically went from 1,652 to 1,942. So that, for me, was almost $300 increase, what 17.5% increase in taxes for that. Again, I don't know if I'm not saying any of you are responsible for that, but I'm just saying that for me, it's an outrageous amount of money to have increase year after year, and I'm trying to figure out how to do something about that. From the last election, obviously, we, you know, I'm not trying to get any as far as politically affiliated here, but two of the three candidates that were elected to our board had successful campaigns run by the Minnesota Parents Alliance. So Matt Swanson, Paul Carbone, I've never talked to either of those gentlemen. I'm sure they're nice people, but I've never met them before. But the MPA, which is the group that ran their campaigns, has helped over 80 candidates win election to school boards this election. So according to their site, that's the number, the group vocally denounces students' rights in schools. They've run many anti-LGBTQ, anti-gay, anti-lesbian protests or events, some at the St. Paul Capitol right here. Yeah, what year is this, right? What are we doing? They try to limit sexual education in schools, so on and so forth, right? It's a group with an agenda. It's in their name, the Minnesota Parents Alliance. It's for the parents, not for the students. Anyway, so now that they have at least one seat in the majority of school boards in the state, they're ready to stuff school vouchers down our throats as long as they can, as fast as they can, like they were harvesting foie gras.
One more minute.
Say again. So what does my property tax have to do with school vouchers? If school vouchers take federal funds that were dedicated towards education, public education, and divert that to private education, private institutions, our public schools are going to suffer. We're going to have less funding for our public schools, which means less support for our teachers, less support for our students. The parents are going to have to cover that. They're going to ask us to pay for things that we normally wouldn't have to pay for. They're not going to be able to afford, you know, substitute teachers or whatnot, and we're going to have to take extra PTO. It's going to trickle down to the parents, and I don't have 17% to keep giving everybody every year, especially with that coming down the pipe. So I'm asking you guys, please figure out how to reduce these property taxes that I have to pay, or else I'm bringing more people and we can all talk about it then. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Is there anyone else in here who would wish to speak on something not on the agenda tonight? Yes, sir.
Craig Pratt, 10050 185th Street West, Lakeville, Minnesota. Been in Lakeville for 24-plus years. I've owned three different homes. A little over a decade ago, we bought our last property. A property on 185th Street now that's going to be, we're going to lose some of our property through the, go into a four-lane. So as a Lakeville resident, I'm fully supportive of that project. I think it's great. We need four lanes. We need bike paths, even though I'm losing property. But here's my challenge. Since 2015, the S&amp;P is up 221%. So when I went to build my home and I came to the city, they said, whatever you do from a landscaping perspective, do it 75 feet from the center, and then you're going to be in good shape. In the event that we expand the road, nothing will happen. So I said, thank you. Went and did exactly what they said. Nine years later, guess what? That didn't turn out to be true. And then separately, they've decided, Dakota County and the city have decided to add a pond to my property that was not in the original plan that I thought may happen in the roadway. So that's an extra bonus for me as a property owner, losing more of my property, and more importantly, developable lots. So let me get back to the S&amp;P since 2015, up 221%. If I'd have taken $100,000 plus, we'll call it, that I put into landscaping, the value of that today would be 321K. I wouldn't have done the landscaping if I knew there was going to be a pond and it was all going to be removed. My neighbor next to me, Jim Walter, at 10132, in 2014, when that original roundabout went in and started the property, they gave him a check for $70,000 to take a portion of his property. Most recently, I believe, you've settled with Jim as well, you guys probably voted on it, for a settlement of additional $283,000 that you're taking on his property. Your initial offer to me, and by the way, I don't know if any of you know how to read this, because I'm not a lawyer and I'm not an appraiser, but if you're going to represent the city, I would ask you to go through this and tell me how easy it is to understand as a regular resident. So my first offer was for 146K, nowhere near what Jim had gotten in 2014 and now in 2024. I spent $3,000 of my own money to get an oral report from an appraiser who's found multiple issues with this appraisal report, recommending to go to get an attorney, and I've taken it to two firms who believe we have a real case here and actually want to fight the case. Catching one of those mistakes, I got a revised offer the other day, because it wasn't recorded supposedly when something was bought, because nothing was bought.
Mr. Pratt, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay. It went from 146 to 170. I would like a few of the city council members, along with Justin, to look at my last proposal you were copied on, and I'd like to discuss a fair and equitable settlement. Otherwise, I will be forced to get an attorney, and that's going to be a waste of taxpayers' money, and I think it sets a bad precedent that you won't match what my neighbor right next to me got, who has less property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am. Is it on something that's on the agenda for? Well, come on up and we'll see where we go. I'll just ask you to state your name and address.
Wosnowski.
Sherry, you can pull the microphone down, honey, so we can hear you.
My name is Sherry Wosnowski. I live on 209th Street West in Lakeville, and I didn't, it's the first time I've attended, so I just had a question. It's something I had read in the Lakeville paper, and I know there's several developments going on in Lakeville, and it sounds like it's on 185th Street heading west, and I had a couple of questions and didn't know where to start, so I thought I'd come here and ask. This development, it just had a paragraph in the article talking about the development that there's going to be, like, there was like 260-some trees and there's going to be like 91 or 61 left after they develop. My question is, is there any guidance from your, when you guys okay developments as far as how they can handle removal of trees? It sounded like these were big old trees, and just needed to start somewhere to ask a couple of questions, how that works.
Absolutely, and it's a great question, and if there is staff available to maybe take the conversation outside, I will just briefly state that we are in the middle of a tree preservation policy conversation right now, but it is likely that the property you're talking about has several trees coming down for that development. But we can have staff go through, I think, a little bit more of those details with you one-on-one, if you'd like.
Okay, I would appreciate that, yep, and just good to hear that maybe there is some more input from the city and so that there isn't so much just taken down for the sake of building is my thought on that.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Is there anyone else in the chamber? All right. Well, we will move on then. Mr. Miller, are there any additional agenda items for you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 6E has a revised item, and I can go through that when we discuss the consent agenda.
Okay. Then we'll move on to presentations and introductions. Our first item is new police officer introductions, and we'll have Chief Paulson start us off.
Good evening, active Acting Mayor, members of the council. I will call up our officers being introduced and recognized tonight, along with your designated badge pin, if you just want to make your way up to the right-hand side over here. So we appreciate you, council, taking time. I know it's a busy meeting tonight, but we're excited to introduce our folks to you and by extension to our community as well. All of these officers being introduced have started and are in the midst of either their field training process, or they've recently been moved out to their solo patrol position, so relatively new, but at a few different points of their journey through our onboarding process. So Nick, why don't we start with you? You're coming up already. Why don't you and your badge pinter just make your way over here? Yes. And as I read their introduction, they've each chosen someone to pin their badge on in a ceremonial way tonight to add some honor and tradition to the profession. So we'll start here with Officer Nick Peelock, badge 48127. Officer Peelock began as a police officer with us on July 24th, 2023. He missed a significant, he mixed a significant injury and surgery into his first several months, which delayed his journey a little bit, and is why his training trajectory is off a little bit from some of the other ones. Nick's originally from Sartell, Minnesota, and was active in football and wrestling in high school. After high school, he obtained his Associate's Degree in Law Enforcement from Inver Hills Community College and his Bachelor's Degree in Law Enforcement from Minnesota State Mankato. He joined Lakeville PD as a community service officer in the summer of 2020, where he worked part-time until his promotion to police officer. Outside of work, Nick helps coach the wrestling team at Creighton Durham Hall High School and is actively involved as a Big Brother through the Big Brothers Big Sisters program. In his free time, he enjoys hunting, traveling, spending time at the family lake home, and attending concerts. Next, we'll call on Officer Brian Smith. Nick, you can step, you can go over by the wall for a minute. Yeah. I know you like the limelight, but you got to share it here. Officer Brian Smith, badge 48129, began as a police officer with us on January 3rd of this year. Brian was born and raised in South Minneapolis and is the youngest of four children. He graduated with a Bachelor's Degree from St. Mary's University in Winona and has also earned a Master's Degree from the University of St. Thomas. Brian worked as a Minneapolis Police and Fire Dispatcher for two years before joining the Rochester Police Department as a police officer. He worked with Rochester PD for about eight years before coming onboard with us earlier this year. Brian's three older siblings have given him the experience of enjoying eight nieces and nephews. He also has a significant other, and they've been together for over seven years now. In his free time, he enjoys being active in and around sports. He runs every single day, plays adult baseball, adult hockey, and assists in coaching multiple sports at the high school level. Congratulations to Officer Smith. Officer Spencer Angle, badge 48130. Officer Angle began as a police officer with us on July 15th of this year. Spencer graduated with a Bachelor's Degree from St. Mary's University in Winona. After school, he worked as a community service officer for the Burnsville Police Department, and from there, he was hired as a police officer with the Faribault Police Department. In his five-plus years with Faribault PD, he held multiple instructor positions, was a field training officer, and a member of the South Metro SWAT team. Spencer currently lives in Lakeville with his two children, and in his free time, he enjoys being outdoors and taking trips with his kids. Congratulations to Officer Angle. Officer Riley Peterson, badge 48131. Officer Peterson also began with us as a police officer on July 15th of this year. Riley grew up in the South Metro, mainly in Apple Valley and Rosemont. He graduated from Eastview High School before moving on to Raspisson University, where he graduated with an Associate's Degree in Law Enforcement. He completed his law enforcement degree and skills training in March of this year. Riley originally started as a community service officer with the Lakeville Police Department in August of 2023 and continued part-time in this role until his promotion to police officer. Policing runs in Riley's family as his grandfather was a Minneapolis-St. Paul Airport Police Officer for many years. Riley currently lives in Rosemont with his girlfriend, and in his free time, he enjoys staying active by golfing and snowboarding. Congratulations to Officer Peterson. Next, not so much an introduction, but a recognition, Sergeant Jeremy Lurfall, badge Jeremy was promoted from police officer to sergeant back on May 13th of this year, and he brings a wealth of policing experience to this role. He began full-time, his full-time policing career at the Goodhue County Sheriff's Office back in 1997. He spent eight years there as a patrol deputy, school resource officer, canine handler, and a member of their SWAT team. In July of 2005, he was hired as a police officer by the Lakeville Police Department. In Lakeville, he's been a detective, worked in street crimes, was a field training officer, and member of the crime scene unit. In January of 2019, Jeremy went back to the Goodhue County Sheriff's Office to serve as their chief deputy until November of '22, when he came back to us in Lakeville PD. Since May, Jeremy has transitioned well into his supervisory role in Lakeville by bringing the mindset of a mentor and a coach, where he's worked primarily with our night shift patrol teams. His experience and calm demeanor have been very well received. Congrats on the promotion to Sergeant Jeremy Lurfall. I'll call all five of you up to do your ceremonial oath of office, and Acting Mayor Lee will come down to administer that. If you just want to face, line up and face our audience and...
If you don't mind coming a little bit closer, thank you. It is my extreme privilege and honor to swear you in tonight. You are joining a community that truly values the service you are already doing for the city of Lakeville, and I hope you not only feel that, but take part in that community that we all cherish here in Lakeville. So if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of police officer for the city of Lakeville, in the county of Dakota, and state of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Chief, are you going to ask your staff to stay through your report?
This might be kind of telling as they walk out, but yeah, we'll give them a minute to...
Sure.
As they're walking out, I will just highlight, there's a number of them here, but our field training officers play a huge part in this role. Those are officers that have experience, and they pair up with our new hires to kind of show them the ropes, and it's a significant contribution to our department, to those field training officers. All right, I think we'll get started here. So presenting our quarter-three report for months of July through September of this year tonight, and as we do, we'll start with our mission statement. The Lakeville Police Department exists to ensure an excellent quality of life in Lakeville by serving and protecting in a professional and innovative way. Kind of contending our trend here with some personnel updates, just highlighting some people that have moved positions within the department. On the left, there is Shelley Tang, and Shelley was a records technician for us for over 20 years, and she recently moved to a position of evidence technician due to a long-term retirement in that spot. So she transitioned back in June, and with that came a switch to some new evidence manager software as well, and Shelley's been doing a great job in that role. And then two new SROs this year, school resource officers. In the middle there, Drew Lindberg's been with us, but starting this fall, he is the SRO down at Lakeville South High School, and then Christine Good is covering our three middle schools, always happy to partner with Lakeville Schools on our SRO program. In our investigative divisions, a movement there as well, on the left, Carrie Wachorick. She moved from patrol officer to our street crimes unit. Street crimes is a two-person unit that helps to tackle some of, take a more proactive approach to tackle some of our higher crime areas or ongoing problematic issues. Emily Bears, second from the left, she transitioned from a patrol officer to a detective in a rotating position. Jessica Swanner moved within the rotation from a two-year to a four-year investigator, and then on the right, Mike Lamb went from street crimes to a rotating detective position there. So of our seven permanent detective, excuse me, seven full-time detectives, we have a mixture of some that are permanent detectives, some four-year rotations, and some two-year rotations as well to help with some career enrichment, getting people an opportunity to learn that role and bring that back to the patrol setting, but also to provide some stability and expertise in there as well with some of the more involved cases that they see. Not going to spend much time here, because you just saw these next two people in person, but Spencer Angle again started with us back in July, along with Riley Peterson. More in our administrative and civilian role. Alex Yonkey began with us in late July as our new administrative specialist. Alex comes with a number of years of experience in logistics and supply chain industry. She's also been a banquet captain on a brackets crossing for eight years. She started way back when, during her high school and college years, working part-time and in the summers for our park and rec department and Lakeville arenas. And I always like to highlight the fact that she drove the Zamboni too for a while, so. But she's been a great addition to our team, and those of you that know administrative support staff, they get pulled in a lot of directions and require a lot of her facility, and she certainly has all of that, and she's great to have around. Our new records compliance specialist is Sunny Sasser. Sunny came from the Eagan Police Department, where she was for about eight years. Prior to that, she worked in dispatch for Airport Police Department, and she's also stepped into a role that changed a little bit for us, and she's done a great job of taking her experience from both dispatching and Eagan PD and implementing with what we need at Lakeville PD, and jumped right in and hit the ground running. She's, again, been a great addition for us, and we're happy to have her onboard. An update on our cadet grant program, so this was our first crack at hiring a police cadet, Nick Novo. He started school back in October, so he's well on his way up at Hannupah County Technical College, and this program was designed for people that may have a degree in something other than law enforcement or have a law enforcement-related degree, but experienced some type of barrier where they were having a hard time getting through the schooling and training to become a police officer. So we take them onboard in a cadet position, help them get through school, and when they graduate, in Nick's case, next spring, he will transition into a full-time police officer role at that point. And here's a picture in the slide of Nick. He's got a degree in criminal justice, minor in emergency management, homeland security from North Dakota State, and again, he'll be done in March of 2025 with his schooling. We hope to have him in, live and in person, introduced at some time in the future as well. It's not in the slide here, but we were also approved for two additional cadet grants in 2025. We just finished posting that position, are working through interviews now, so hopefully we can gather a couple of additional candidates for that. Highlighting here some of our community engagement initiatives in the months from July through September. Panda Prague on top was obviously our biggest one of the year, several pictures from that. National Night Out in August, we helped out at the Dakota County Fair. We participated with many other city departments at Antlers Park with the Reagan Smith Olympic Kickoff, on the Carol 11 Sunrise Show, and then Cop on a Rooftop with Dunkin' Donuts. We're out at the Senior Center quite frequently, doing presentations on scams and fraud. It's always well-received with those folks. Fall Festival at All Saints, and lastly, our ice cream social with the residents of Queen Just a couple bullet points to highlight our training and development, a few to note there. Emergency driving class officers are required to attend emergency driving once every five years. That's a license requirement. A lot of times, our newer officers or those newer to driving squad cars go through much more frequently than that, but everybody has to get through at least once every five years. We do that out at Dakota County Technical College on the track. And then our firearms and defensive tactics training, we've been doing some different things with that. Those are, you know, low-use skills, but when you need them, you need to be certainly in tune and refined with those skills. So we've incorporated those into what we're calling Tuesday Trainings, where we, in addition to our annual days-long training, we break it up into some smaller blocks and get officers just some repetitions, maybe in an hour or two blocks, where they come off the road and refine these skills, and that's been well-received and a lot easier to accommodate than pulling everybody off the schedule at once. Some efforts of our Public Safety Foundation in September was our Police and Fire Ball, the 10th Annual, where Officer Sarah Irman was honored as this year's Police Officer of the Year. It was also exciting to bring back all, almost all of the past honorees from the last 10 years as well, but another great event that the foundation put on, and we're always happy to be a part of that. Foundation put on a Police and Fire Family Picnic in August at Aronson Park, which was fun. fun because it involved families and kids as well. And it's always fun to get together and see everybody's families. We don't get to do that enough. We culminated with a softball game there. You can see a nice, nice photo. I know someone's going to ask, you'll see the picture on the left there is Chief Meyer and I doing the ceremonial coin toss. And that's about the only thing we won that night from the police department perspective. But we did win the coin toss. So we're happy. Two cases of distinction that kind of highlight multiple areas of our department here. The top there is assisting another agency, suburban agency out of the Des Moines area who had a bank, armed bank robbery. The suspect ended up being in one of our local hotels up here through some surveillance and techniques. The officers there came up with a tactical plan to safely take him into custody, which is always priority one. It's always nice when we can recover some evidence as well. That helps to aid in the prosecution, which they did. A lot of good evidence from, from the bank robbery there. And he was turned over to Iowa authorities and everybody was, was safe and he will be held accountable for his actions. Then on the bottom there, a theft report, something that's been in the media a little bit, not just in Lakeville, but in our region is something called jackpotting, where a pretty sophisticated crew goes into bank ATMs and can hack into the software and drain those ATMs, which is a significant crime, as you can imagine. Through some proactive work with getting out some crime intelligence bulletin, identifying a possible vehicle, some suspect photographs, we were able to get these people stopped with a neighboring agency. This group had been out in Michigan before they were in Minnesota. Again, a search warrant was conducted on the vehicle as well as a hotel room, a lot, a lot of cash and some related items and clothing were recovered there. And ultimately, two suspects were charged locally for the jackpotting case in our jurisdiction, but there is some involvement with federal authorities as far as the whole ring goes itself. So more to come on that one most likely. Getting into some of our numbers here, our case files year over year for the third quarter were pretty consistent, just about 20, 18 below where we were last year at this time. Our 911 crisis response, these are the calls that come into 911, but are diverted to Crisis Response Unit before being dispatched to police. These are specific to Lakeville. So as you can see, in the third quarter, we had a total of 18 calls that were routed that way. And only three of those resulted in, in police ultimately being involved, which is the, the goal of these, to not involve entities that, that don't need to be involved or may actually make things more problematic than they need to be. So it's good to see that system appears to be working as intended. Calls for service, you can see up towards the top there, we're at about 14,224 in the third quarter and compared to 13,005 a year ago. Two categories that we look at frequently are welfare checks and crisis mental health calls. Both of those can, can be related at times, but we're pretty consistent year over year in both of those categories. Then getting into the traffic side of things, traffic numbers are up quite a bit. We've had some more time to get out there and be more proactive in traffic enforcement. Property damage crashes are up by about 10 in the third quarter, but happy to say the personal injury crashes are down by six in quarter three. And then these are, look at our calls for service in comparison to some of our neighboring jurisdictions, Apple Valley, Burnsville and Eagan. Criminal offense reporting on some of the bigger crimes that we see. DUIs are spot-on at 71, which is probably hard to replicate, but consistency there. Aggravated assaults are up slightly. Other assaults total are up by a few. Motor vehicle thefts are down significantly from 12 to two. We, we put out a lot of information throughout the last year on protecting your vehicle, locking it up, closing garage doors. Most of our motor vehicle thefts are crimes of opportunity. Keys in the vehicle, sometimes vehicle running, garage doors open. So a big push there for some awareness. We're hoping that helps to reduce that number down to two. Damage vandalism numbers are, are down. Weapon violations, those are calls that are specific to weapons only. We do see weapons and other calls from assaults to robberies, things like that. But those are weapon only calls. And then sex offenses up by a few. Lastly, just some photos of our social media presence out there. It's not all dogs and donuts, but that seems to be kind of a highlight there. But a lot of good work by our folks behind the scenes. Alex Yonkey was mentioned earlier. And then Nicole Marbin, our crime analyst, do the, the lion's share of our social media work. And we're happy with the work they do. So with that, I'm happy to relinquish the podium, but we'll certainly entertain any questions or comments you have.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel?
Yes.
Excuse me. Yeah, just congratulations on another good quarter. It's really good to see the stats maintaining. That just shows a good presence. And congratulations on the hiring here. That's the most important thing you do, getting good people in the door. Your department's worked really hard to build the trust of the community. And it looks like you have some quality people that will keep working on that trust. So that and the field training are just the most important things I think you do to get somebody started. So well done. And I'm really confident with our department.
Thank you. I believe you do have one opening for a police officer. Is that correct?
Yes. Are you interested?
Maybe the cadet program.
You have openings, yes. Yeah, we're finishing up a hiring process right now. So we're kind of in the midst of that. But yeah, we will, with, with growth and some upcoming retirements, we will, we will have openings in the near future for sure. So.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course.
All right. We will now move on to the consent agenda. These are typically items that are general business of the, the city. Are there any items that the council needs to remove from the consent agenda? Any additional information we need to know?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Item 6E is an amendment, a contract amendment with Alina Health Emergency Medical Services, who provides our ALF ambulance service. They are asking for an amendment to the staffing requirements in that contract. This was reviewed by the ALF Board and approved. And that board is then asking each of the three cities, Apple Valley, Lakeville and Farmington, to approve. The reason I bring it up tonight is this agreement that's before you is a little bit different in form from what was in the packet. The substance is the same. It's just a change in the format.
Great. Any questions, comment? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll prove this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. We have approved the consent agenda. We'll now move on to action items under line seven, starting with a public hearing on the application for Swing Lab Performance Golf to operate an on-sale malt liquor license. Does the applicant want to start off by introducing their topic first? Mick?
Good evening. Mick there is. I live at 18133 Gavel Lane in Lakeville. I'm here representing Swing Lab, Swing Lab Performance Golf. We opened about a year and a half ago downtown, right on Holyoke Avenue. We're just asking, one of the things we found since we've been open is we have a lot of requests from our clients that come in and want to know if they can purchase beer while they're using the simulators. And so we thought, well, in the past, we've had to tell them no. And we've lost, we've realized we've lost business because of it. So we're asking just if we can have a malt license just to sell canned beer. And we're going to do some pizzas, frozen food, stuff like that. Nothing major. I got enough food headaches with my coffee shop.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there a staff report?
Nope. The police department did do a background check and everything is ready to go.
Very good, Counsel. Any questions or comment?
Well, I'm just wondering if their swing improves with a beer or?
From personal experience, for me, yeah. Yonkey's not that good.
It sounds like a great idea.
All right. Well, then this is a public hearing. So we will open it up for public comment if there is any. Are there any folks in the chamber or online who wish to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
There's a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The public hearing is closed. Counsel, are there any other questions or comments you have about the application? Very good. Then is there a motion? Yes.
I move to grant an on-sale malt liquor license to Swing Lab Performance Golf located at 20721 Holyoke Avenue.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Volk?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
All right. It is approved. Congrats. We'll meet you there. All right. We'll now move on to item B, resolution ordering improvements in preparation of the plans for the 2025 street reconstruction projects. Mr. Omi?
Good evening, Mayor, Acting Mayor, City Council. Can I get the PowerPoint? There. Tonight, we'd like to have a public hearing for next year's street reconstruction project and ask that the council consider a resolution to move the project forward. So tonight, agenda is shown here. We'd like to discuss the purpose and need for the project. Typically, we have an annual street reconstruction project that we do in the community where streets can no longer be maintained cost-effectively with minor maintenance. So this is the project that has been identified in our capital improvement project for 2025. So we'd like to review the project scope of the project with the council and talk about the financing of the project and then preliminary, proposed preliminary assessments at this time, and then talk about the schedule moving forward. And then at the end of the question and answers, if you, if the council has any questions, we'd like to hold a public hearing for the public. So with that, a little background on the project itself, this is a 1.3 miles worth of reconstruction of some city streets that actually haze and 170th Street is considered a collector road. And then he's at Harbor Court is, is the cul-de-sac. So the project is just west of Cedar Avenue. And then the, the western project limits is, is 175th Street. So the reason for the project, the pavement is currently in, in poor condition. We rate our city streets every three years and have a scoring from one, one to 100. The streets in this area averaged out to about 43, 44, which is in the category of reconstruction where 100 scale or 100 score is, is a new street and zero is basically a gravel road. So that's the, this for, main emphasis for the project. We also heard from residents that we've heard about some traffic concerns, speeding and such, we'd like to try to address with this project as well. We do have a history of watering breaks in this area, especially along 170th Street. And we'll go through that a little bit. And then we do have identified some drainage issues that we'd like to make improvements to this area with. And we've identified a lot of those with talking to the residents in this area as well. And again, we've, we've added this project into the scope of, of, scope of the project for, in the CIP project, in the CIP. So little history on the project itself. So back in August of this year, the city council did authorize preparation of feasibility study. And since then, we've had two neighborhood meetings, one in November, one in September, and then another one we've had just last Thursday as well. So and tonight we're having the public hearing on the project. So now I'd like to get into the, the details of the project. And for that, I'd like to invite up Jeff Oliver with WSB and Associates. Jeff, and WSB has been working on the feasibility study and the preliminary design of the project. And just real quick and fun fact about Jeff, Jeff used to work for the city of Lakeville in the engineering department back in the early 90s. So it's kind of a come home project for him.
Welcome back.
Members of the city council, it is very nice to be back. It's been 30 years since I stood behind this podium, but it's, it's a joy. It's, my wife and I bought our first home in Lakeville before we, we moved out and moved home. So it's, it's been wonderful to see the changes that have occurred here. Mentioned, we are in the process of, or we finalized the feasibility report for the street reconstruction project. Project is going to utilize pavement reclamation, which we basically grind up the existing pavement with a portion of the gravel base or the granular base underneath it. We are repairing curb and gutter that is broken, settled and in poor condition, as well as making modifications to non-compliant pedestrian ramps within the project area. Once all that work is done, the, the road is graded to rebuild the crown and facilitate stormwater drainage, and then pavement is placed. One of the things we did here through the public process was concerns about traffic speed and stops in compliance on these collector streets. We performed a search of crash history that included the intersection of 170th and Cedar. There were 36 total crashes recorded within the corridor. And two of them were at an all ways stop intersection of Hayes and 172nd. There were no other crashes in the, the proper of Hayes or N170th. They were primarily focused at Cedar Avenue. So the crash history is low. One of those again was, was at a, a non-compliance issue at, at that stop sign. We also performed traffic volumes and speed survey this fall. And you can see that on Hayes, we had 11500 and 50 vehicles, of which 71% were at 30 miles an hour or less. And further, 35 mile an hour or less was 98% of the traffic. 170th was a little bit higher volumes and a little bit poorer compliance and speed with the speeds. We had 17, almost 1800 vehicles there with 30%, or 54%, excuse me, going the speed limit or lower. And, but 96% going 35 and lower indicates to us that there, there is an issue with speed, particularly on 170th. And that could be that, that the street may be being used as a shortcut to, to skip some of the intersections along Cedar. However, that being said, I think that the volumes and the speed profile that we saw here is fairly typical for collector streets of, of this size and this nature. Some of the things that we've been discussing and analyzing to address those traffic issues are some modified pavement markings, widening striping on the edges and adding stop bars and narrowing the lanes with the painting. We've also looked at changes, potential changes to signing, including the, the flashing stop signs that are pictured there and larger speed limit signs and potentially placards above the speed limit to help draw people's attention to that. We, the installation of traffic circles, which are very small, typically fitting within the existing footprint of an intersection. There's one pictured in the bottom right there. City of Minneapolis is experimenting with those in the last few years. And we're, we're looking into those and the potential to install many roundabouts. Each and every one of them has some benefits, some disadvantages, and come with different costs. We're currently discussing all of those with Paul and his staff. And we'll be coming back with final design with the direction that we go with the traffic calming. The water main improvements that are occurring are on both of the subject streets. The Hayes Avenue portion are, is primarily rebolting of all the fittings, hydrants, valves, and installation of anode bags to prevent further corrosion. On this 170th portion of the project, we're doing in-place water main lining. And that is going from the east side of Cedar Avenue all the way over to Hamilton Drive, along with a, on the cul-de-sac that goes to the north and across Foxborough Park to tie into an existing large diameter water main on Half Lock Court to the north. This is being bid as a bid alternate. So we'll see how things pan out with the budget. And you'll get to make the decision on whether to proceed with that additional lining. If not, it likely will occur in the not-too-distant future. If not, it likely will occur in the not-too-distant future. With the water main lining, there's significantly less disruption to the neighborhood. And we don't have to tear up the entire street with a 20-foot wide, eight-foot deep trench to do this. It does come with the requirement that we install temporary water to supply each of the homes. And there's going to be some traffic concerns. There may be lane closures, single-lane roads. But we can expect to see some of those types of disruptions, rather than the noise and the dust and the potential impacts to the trenches from the trenches on the pavement. Other improvements include some sanitary sewer infiltration barriers, replacement of rings, replacement of castings when justified, and storm sewer, including drain tile, some smaller extensions of existing storm sewer, and other items. The estimated project costs and the financing. The general improvement bonds for the reclamation, and the cost on that totals about 1.4 million. The special assessments for the street reclamation and storm sewer work is about just under $600,000. That's coming from, also from general improvement bonds. The tax, property tax reimbursed general improvement bonds for the mill and overlay portion of the project, which we're not talking about, but it is, tonight, but it is part of the overall project, is just under $2 million. The Water Operating Fund will be picking up an estimated $2.1 million. Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund is about $89,000. Again, that's another enterprise fund. And this Storm Sewer Infrastructure Fund is being tacked through the general obligation bonds and the infrastructure fund. That's going to total somewhere around $260,000. The project costs for the street reconstruction portion of the project and storm sewer will be specially assessed consistent with your policy. And that's 40% of those costs are, make up the assessments. Properties benefiting for the improvements are the ones that are assessed. And the costs are prorated, in this case, it's a 44-foot wide street. They're prorated down to be consistent with a local street at 32 feet. The water main, sanitary sewer, and the new storm sewer improvements are not part of the assessments. The city assessment policy is, assesses the residential properties on a single, or for a single family on a per-unit. Duplex and townhomes within the project area are assessed at half of that rate. Commercial exempt or public use properties are on a front-foot basis. Corner lots are, whether they're assessed or not are based on whether it is, or where the driveway fronts typically. It's also, we also factor in the orientation of the house and the past assessment history. The estimated assessments for this project for Hayes and 170th are about $6,200 for the single-family homes, and about $3,100 for the duplex and townhomes. Final findings of the feasibility report are that this, or I'm sorry, I jumped ahead a slide. Final assessment amounts will be figured out and finalized with the bid. And once the bids are open and we know the actual cost that will be involved here. The special assessment will be at a separate hearing, currently scheduled for April 7th of next year. Differments under your policy are available. Anybody that believes they may qualify should contact your finance department. Let's see here. Most of the questions that we heard in the public engagement process were regarding the assessments, specifically the terms, you know, how long are they? What's the interest rate? Can I pay it off? It's those types of questions. We did have some comments regarding the traffic concerns at both open houses. And there were a few comments regarding stormwater drainage and groundwater issues. The schedule for the entire project is outlined here. We're about in the middle here at the public hearing this evening. We're working on the plans and specs into January. The scheduled bid opening is February 19th. And the assessment hearing and the award of the contract is scheduled for April 7th. We anticipate construction to start in May and be completed in the fall. Our recommendation is that the project is feasible, necessary, and cost-effective for, from an engineering perspective, to prolong and improve the quality of the infrastructure in your community. The next steps, as we've discussed, are to conduct the public hearing this evening, and then consider a resolution ordering the improvements and authorizing and finalizing the plans and specifications. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I had two. Could you remind me, with those estimates of the assessments, where does that fall in line for our payback policy in terms of the term that's available for those estimates?
I believe it's a 15-year payback period.
For both the 6,000 and the 3,000?
Sir.
Thank you. And then, I had a-
Could I, I'm sorry, but it's for the 6,300 assessment, that's 15 years. And then, for the 3,000 and some change, that'll be the 10-year term.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then, my question was about temporary water. How does that happen?
Well, basically, it's a plastic pipe that, for the most part, is laying on the ground. Services come off of that, they're tapped in, and they usually go to the hose bib on the front of the house. If that's not possible, if it's difficult to reach or not functioning, sometimes we'll backfeed from property owners on the rear of the house. There's two ways you can handle the service or the temporary main crossing driveways. Typical is to blister over it with gravel or a wood ramp, so it doesn't get damaged from vehicles coming and going. The other place where it's important is across streets. Again, ramps, plywood ramps are sometimes used. They don't wear as well in streets as they do in driveways. So sometimes, we cut, we do cut the pavement, bury them about a foot deep, and then fix that with a patch later as part of the paving.
Gotcha. So, in terms of access to residences, that's a temporary, they'll be a schedule that residents will know about, so they know at what point they can't access their home for a couple hours or whatever that might-
That's correct.
Be. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Then we will move into a public hearing for this item. Again, if you do have a comment on this, I'll ask you to step forward to state your name, address, and I'm asking to keep that to under three minutes. So, is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Yes. Yes, sir. Or, sure. That's okay. I will need you to come to the mic, though.
People listening to the meeting have to be able to hear you.
Okay. My question is, the $6,000, I'm just trying to learn this. Who gets charged that, or who pays that? Is that the resident that lives at the house? They are paying that?
Correct.
For the improvement of the road?
That is their portion of the improvement project.
Okay. Does that happen every time a road is improved in Lakeville?
It depends if it's a mill and overlay project or a full recon. It kind of depends on the situation.
Okay. And then, that 15 years is how long they have to-
That is one of the payment options.
Okay, got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thanks so much for giving me an opportunity to just take a couple of minutes here to chat about this. I am one of the ones that are very interested in the traffic calming capabilities.
If I may.
I've had numerous conversations.
Yes, sorry.
My name is Todd Eldridge, and I live on 17435 Hayes Avenue, 17439 Hayes Avenue. Sorry about that. And I would just like the City Council here to really seriously consider traffic calming capability on Hayes Avenue. My wife and I and kids have lived there for 20 years. And the community is turning over. And there are lots of kids in a very short gap from one stop sign to another stop sign. And people use that as like a drag race or something like that. They go really, really fast from that very short distance of 175th. So, I just encourage, as the city looks at doing this reconstruction, to really consider traffic mitigation options for that, so we can avoid an unfortunate situation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone online? All right, I don't see any other comment. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
And a second? All those in favor to close the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. The hearing is closed. Is there any other comment or questions that council has? If not, then I will take a motion.
I move to approve a resolution ordering the improvements and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications for the 2025 street reconstruction project, city project 25-02.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Bermal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Lee?
Thank you very much. It's my understanding that there are additional conversations happening, particularly in regard to the traffic calming strategies going forward. So I do appreciate the comment on that. We will now move on to item 7C, the Cedar Hills North Preliminary Platte.
Good evening.
Good evening. Steve Trosky with Lennar. Happy to be back in front of the council, seeking approval on a preliminary plat of a community we are calling Cedar Hills North. We anticipate three phases for this project. And at full build-out, we will have approximately 232 homes. The single-family homes will look a lot like what you see at our community Cedar Hills directly to the south. So I invite you to drive through and take a peek at that if you're so inclined. I know Ms. Goodroad has an in-depth presentation to give you. And when she's complete, I'm happy to come back and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good road. Good evening.
And council, thank you, Mr. Trosky. So I will just cover some brief points and then answer any questions. It's a pretty straightforward preliminary plat. The property is located north of 200th Street, just at the corner of 200th and Cedar Avenue. The property is probably familiar to you. We did have asked the council, and the council approved a zoning amendment to tweak the zoning. So you can see on the screen, the area where the single-family homes are located is Zoned RST 2. And then, the area with attached townhomes is RM 3. So that was approved back in October. Here is the preliminary plat, a little bit easier to see it from the site plan. But the property does include, or the development proposal does include 88 single-family lots and 144 attached townhomes. There is a gas line easement that runs, that's that angled line that runs through the site. So that created some complications, if you will, and just challenges as to how to design the site, as well as the realigned and restored channel that runs through the site. We really worked with the applicant, and Lennar helped us out a lot at really minimizing the crossings, so that you can see there's two streets that access at 200th Street. Galafrey runs north-south through the site. And there are three streets that access to the north. But we really wanted to minimize those crossings for the channel. There was some small wetland impact and some small wetlands that were incorporated into this restored channel. So a lot of work was done between our natural resources department, as well as our watershed district to do that. So it turned out really well in terms of the layout. As Mr. Trosky said, the property will be phased in three phases, starting from the south and going north. You can see the different phases on the screen. And then, we asked for a ghost plat of just how possibly the property to the north could develop, how that roadwork network could work and layout. And you can see it on the screen. They're not tied to this, but it is something that helps us understand the layout. Again, another picture of the site plan. There are some existing trees. They're not of high-value trees, just around the homesteads, which will be removed. The applicant is providing quite a bit of new landscaping in terms of screening along 200th Street, as well as along Cedar Avenue. There'll also be new trails built along both of those roadways. There will be trees that are shown a little bit more detailed in the black-and-white landscaping plans that were in your packet, but scattered throughout the single-family portion, as well as abutting each of the buildings along the townhomes. As we work through building permits, we review that to make sure everything is compliant, as well as the building elevations. But as he mentioned, the single-family homes will be very similar to the property or to the neighborhood to the south. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this project at their last meeting on November 7th, and unanimously recommended approval. And I would stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Since this has come up tonight, could you describe what you mean by valuable trees? And what we consider valuable?
Yeah. Trees that are, let me find it in the report. You know, we define significant trees. I don't have the list off the top of my head of what we consider significant trees, but the majority of the trees here were box elder. And so those are more of an infestation type of tree, which we want to see those be removed. And I did talk to her and did give her my card, so we can continue to have that conversation.
Very good. This is not a public hearing, however, I do welcome any comments or questions folks have if you are here or online. Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I move to approve a resolution approving the Cedar Hills North Preliminary Platte.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any final question, comment? Very good. Can we do a roll call vote?
Walter?
Aye.
Volk? Lee?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to our final action item tonight, item 7D, which is related to utility franchise fees. And as our Assistant City Administrator comes up, I did want to just comment that there has been quite significant public input to date. We've received, as council, emails. There has been a Q&amp;A form on the website that has been utilized. And we've seen that feedback, and that was sent to us. And our mayor, who is not able to be here tonight, did ask me to read something real quick, just to acknowledge receipt of some of that feedback. So, he says, "I regret that I cannot join you in person this evening, but I want to express my sincere gratitude to each of you for participating in this public hearing on franchise fees. While the council will not be voting on this this evening, your engagement and feedback are vital to making informed decisions that reflect the needs and desires of the community. Please know that I am fully committed to hearing your thoughts and taking your comments seriously. I will review the feedback shared during this session and provide any necessary follow-up. Your voices are essential to our decision-making process, and I look forward to addressing any concerns or suggestions you may have. Thank you once again for your involvement and dedication. I am eager to review the discussions from tonight's hearing and look forward to discussing this issue with the council at the next meeting in December." Luke Hillier. So with that, Mr. Kinnon, if you wouldn't mind with the staff report?
Sure. Thank you, Acting Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we're just going to go through kind of the history of how we got to this point. And then, we'll open it up for a little bit of public input. So what are franchise fees? The city currently has franchise agreements with Excel, Dakota Electric, Centerpoint Energy, and Dakota Electric. And that franchise agreement allows those utilities to be placed in the city's right-of-way as they are managed by the city. The Minnesota State statute does allow the cities to pose a franchise fee for the installation of those utilities within the city's right-of-way. So, we'll go on to intended uses of the fees. So over the past two years, the city has been working with the transitioning, the fire department from a paid-on call to a hybrid department with paid-on call and full-time firefighters. This transition will require all four fire stations undergo extensive renovations, as well as a possibility of combining two of the stations onto a new site. So the estimated cost of the improvements is anticipated to range from 60 to 68,000, 68 million dollars. The city has also received 7.9 million in state and federal funding to help construct the first center, which would be the first- the first center, which would be the first responders training center on the south of the river, and the total cost of that project is 22 to 24 million. So how did the fees get determined? To initially provide the funds needed to pay for the improvements, the fire and police facilities, the city will need to issue general obligation bonds, or those are loans or almost like a mortgage like you would get for your home, which would need to be paid back over the next 20 years. The city calculated what the yearly payment of those loans would be, and that's really where the fees were determined. The fee would be charged to a single-family home for gas and electric service at $6 per utility or a total of $12. The fee for commercial and industrial users will vary based on their usage. So you can see on this chart, the residential fee is going to be based at that $6 and for an example of for commercial industrial, as I mentioned, those are going to be based on usage and those were our example, these are the proposed fees for each of those categories for commercial industrial. So we looked at franchise fees versus property tax levy and the cost benefit of those. So franchise fees will be at a set rate and won't fluctuate from year to year, unlike taxes, which are based on property values and would change every year. The franchise fee is also will be at a consistent rate where residential and commercial and industrial property owners can rely on that rate. Franchise fees are also equally spread across all gas and electric users, including tax-exempt properties, unlike taxes, which as it shows, you know, taxes and properties don't, we aren't able to collect taxes on those areas. The use of franchise fees would also provide the least financial impact versus taxes. For example, the set annual franchise fee cost for a residential home is $144. If the costs were placed on the tax levy, that same home by 2026 would be paying $164 in taxes and continue to increase based on the property value. The savings between franchise fees and increased taxes for commercial and industrial property owners would be even greater. This chart kind of reflects that a little bit. You can see that the annual franchise fee would stay steady at $12 for residential, but as you can see in 2026 for residential, that fee would go up to $164 and again for commercial, it also increased over the years if it was put onto the tax levy. So the timeline, so council had a set of meetings that worked up to this work session on July 22nd, but at that work session, council did direct staff to move forward with the process of implementing franchise fees. Part of that process is stated by, is required by state statute is for a 90-day period prior to council adopting the ordinances for the franchise fees. That allows time for public input for the city to advertise the franchise fees and the schedule. Then after that, there's an additional 90 days after council, if council does approve the ordinance, there's an additional 90 days for the utilities to implement the fees and for additional advertisement and public input. So the public outreach is part of the timeline. It included social media, the website and newspaper and newsletter. On social media, we had posts on YouTube, Nextdoor, Facebook and Instagram. Those were posted between July and September. On the website, on August 17th, we published the informational webpage and the public input part of the webpage for people to submit the comments, which US council has received. In addition, on September 2nd, we added a news flash on the front page just to draw a little bit more attention to the informational page. In August 17th, in the quarterly newsletter, the city sent out a half-page notice to every household in Lakeville, publishing the information regarding the franchise fees. On September 26th, there was an article in The Sun This Week and then on the 7th of November, the mayor had a guest article in The Sun This Week that also talked about the franchise fee process. This is the set of meetings I previously mentioned, you know, council had a retreat in January, in January to start looking at the franchise fees and then also at the work sessions in February, April and again in July, council reviewed the information and worked through the process. Finance committee also looked at the franchise fee and the process through the April, June and August and most recently last week at their November meeting. Economic Development Committee reviewed it on August 27th and the chamber reviewed it on May 10th and then also followed up in September and October with information to all their chamber members. So the next steps, so this is what brings us to tonight. So tonight is a public information session for the council to accept input from the public. At the next meeting in December would be the time when council would consider adoption of the ordinances to implement the franchise fees. If council does approve those ordinances, December 3rd would be when we would send out the notices to PUC, Public Utilities Commission, as well as the utility companies to start initiating that process on their end. December 4th would then kick off the second 90 days, which would give the utilities and the PUC time to implement the information and notify their customers. Then the fees would then take effect on April 1st of 2025. So it's just a quick summary of where we're at and how we got here and staff will be available for any questions.
Thank you very much. As it's been mentioned, this is not a public hearing, this is a feedback session, so there will not be a vote tonight, but there has been great public input already and I imagine many of you in the chambers here have additional input to add. Similar, though, to public comment or a public hearing, I would ask that those wishing to speak come to the podium, state their name, address and limit themselves to three minutes or less. And I will be refraining from dialogue back and forth because I just want to make sure that everyone's concerns and feedback are heard tonight, but we will take note of all your questions and if there does need to be follow-up, we will make sure to address that with you either after the meeting or one-on-one afterwards. So with that, is there anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this topic? Don't be shy. Yes, sir.
Again, Dane Schneeman. Again, so just general, this is the first time I'm learning about it, but I would just ask, you know, what cost-cutting measures and competitive bid process is put forward to make sure that construction costs are minimized, things that are necessary are happening, things that are unnecessary that are not happening, right? So I'll look more into that, but that's just something that first comes to mind. So thank you very much for listening, appreciate it.
Can I get your address?
16851 Javelin Ave in Lakeville.
Thank you.
And you, sir?
Evening. Derek Dotson, 17718 Hickory Court. I've already exchanged emails with each of you expressing my distaste for this franchise fee proposal, but I wanted to show up here even though it's probably redundant. Large criminal enterprises often use shell companies to reroute funds to create illusion that money came from someplace else and we call that money laundering. In the state of Minnesota, cities often use a tax term called franchise fees, which is basically the same thing. To be clear, not one cent of this fee actually comes from the utilities. So you're saying you're charging the utility to use this public, but you're not charging the utility, you're charging us to use the public land. That's, I just find it incredulous that we're even considering it. We use property taxes to fund our basic services. Those taxes are designed to distribute the burden based on the ability to pay and there can only be two reasons to devise a strategy that pretends to create a new bucket of money and that would be to shield the council from accountability or that the council thinks the property tax structure is inappropriately allows lower-income citizens, churches and other nonprofit organizations to avoid paying their fair share. I don't think that's the case. People living at the poverty level shouldn't have to pay the same as millionaires just because they have the audacity to try to heat their homes and minimizing the impact of $144 a year on struggling families or elderly citizens living on a fixed income is embarrassingly tone deaf. Combining this tax with the upcoming tax, I'm sorry, combining this tax with the upcoming rate increases coming from Dakota Electric, some people are going to see nearly a 20% increase in their utility bills. Social Security COLA only went up two and a half. Long story short, we don't need a new way of taxing our citizens. We have one that works, is fair and provides adequate visibility and accountability. I'm aware that other cities are taking advantage of this franchise fee loophole, but none of those cities do I admire. Emulating lesser cities don't make us better and I don't think that is our goal is to be anything other than the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Drew Boxer, 20359 Hampton Avenue in Lakeville, obviously. So I have a quick question that I couldn't figure out from the info. What happens when the 20 years is up? Is that on the information somewhere that I just missed?
Can I respond to that, Mr. Miller?
There are 20-year agreements that would have to be renewed.
So it is a, it does have a sunset on it?
Correct.
Cool, thank you. And then was other financing considered with the state legislature that they granted some of the different cities' sales tax, local sales tax options? Was that explored at all?
It's a good question and we can provide more information maybe at the end of the public hearing, but we will write that question down.
Cool. Because it seems like a perfect situation for that. I know other cities have done that for very similar situations, trying to expand their public safety campuses and that type of thing.
Sure.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No need to apologize.
That's what we're here for.
Sherry Wisniewski, 9545209 Street West, Lakeville. When was it decided to do the fire station and bring it up to a level and how was that decided?
And that probably deserves a little bit more explanation as well. We can add that to our list of questions to pull together afterwards.
Okay.
But good question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Is there anyone online? My teacher always said, "Offer at least seven seconds of silence," so I'm gonna... Okay. So like I said, we have received several comments via email and on the forum and there were some direct questions tonight. Are there some responses we can provide?
Sure, I can answer. Mayor and council, one question I heard is about whether or not we could go to the state and ask for more money through the state sale or a local option sales tax. There's currently a moratorium on cities asking for a sales tax at the legislature that's been in place for the past two years and I think it goes for one more year. The cities that have gotten sales tax dollars, it's going to be limited now to certain buckets of projects. I don't know if this is necessarily is going to fit in one of those projects or not and so it hasn't been an option for us to go and ask for a state's or a local option sales tax for the past two years. We did receive funding to the tune of $7 million, $7 million, a little bit more toward funding the first center, that's the training center for the police and fire and ambulance. So we did receive, that was through the bonding bill, so we have received some money that way. In relation to the question about a timeline on when the decision is made to make the fire improvements, the council's been discussing our fire department staffing for several years. 2024, so the year we're currently in, was the first year that we hired six full-time firefighters and so that final decision was made last year as part of the budget process. That money was included in the budget for this year. And then we recently received a $15 million grant to hire, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number, but it's enough to fund another 15 firefighters for three years. And so for the next three years, we're going to be, after, in 2025, we will now have 21 full-time firefighters in addition to the between 50 and 60, maybe 70 paid-on-call firefighters or volunteer firefighters that we have. When we made those decisions is when the council decided and we had some studies done is that we would need to look at how we're going to house those firefighters because our paid-on-call or volunteer firefighters do not live at fire stations like you think of normally. They live at their house, they respond to their call. When you have full-time firefighters, you need to have living quarters for them and that's what is necessitating the upgrade to the fire stations at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I know over the next several weeks, there may be more questions and we are happy to continue dialoguing with the public and hearing your concerns, questions, and if we don't know the answer, we'll direct you to the correct staff member to help us out there, too. But thank you for your engagement and ongoing engagement in this conversation. With that, I'd like to move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business the council would like to discuss? No, new business? Are there any announcements tonight?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Can I just mention one thing? But, Mr. Miller, you'll have to help me on the date again. There is at the arena, the Thanksgiving, I don't remember what it's called, Thanksgiving opening for the line of health, the pavilion on the, at the arena, but anyway, it's open to the public and I wanted to say it was November 30th. And I'm sorry that I didn't look that up before I just mentioned it, but I'm sure it's on our website, too. So anyway, the new pavilion next to the arena is going to be open and it's a great way to have the public come and see it for the first time and see that they're, how things are operating at the arenas, so, thank you.
Very good. Did you want to confirm that date?
I can't right off the top of my head.
Okay, sure.
I thought it, I thought it.
All right, so the next item, we are going to adjourn to closed session, so we'll be asking folks to dismiss the chambers once we move to that. But I am seeking a motion to adjourn to a closed session to develop or consider an offer for the sale of real property located at 20830 Keokuk Avenue, Lakeville, Minnesota, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C 3.
That's my motion.
Got it. Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, we are now moving to closed session.